All right, so we're going to move on here to J1. And Eddie, just to save you a little bit of time, I think probably most everyone's had a chance to review this. I just kind of wanted to bounce my thought by folks to see if they're on the same spot because this is largely going to impact Merritt Island and a big piece of D2. Not to say exclusively by any means, but it certainly does have an impact to us. As to the numbered entries on the agenda report, I would suggest where you talk about up to $1,000 a day fine. My understanding is the minimum fine is 10 bucks a day?
It's 10 typically.
10?
A special magistrate will be toward 25 a day.
Okay, so here's what I'm thinking if folks are on board. So, we would recommend to the special magistrate a $75 a day fine if the subject property itself is connected to a portion of your utility or our utility for that matter, which could spill directly or indirectly into the lagoon or into any body of groundwater. My thought being 75 a day is enough to get pretty much anyone's attention, and if it's really a property that's hurting the environment, that's what we ought to focus on. Otherwise, the minimum, if it's $10 a day, $10 a day. If it's 25 a day, 25 a day is the recommendation. Along with that, though, I'd also like us to look at expanding the pilot area where the sorrel funds are available to fix leaking laterals from where it is in the limited portion of Beachside to the entire county. I believe that Natural Resources is okay with this. I talked to Virginia about it. The amount of funding would remain totally unchanged at, I believe it's 840,000 that they have available to fix leaking laterals. So, we wouldn't change any allocation. We would simply broaden the area to include the entire county, obviously the portions of the county where we have our utility system. So, that's essentially what I would suggest. I don't know if folks think that's crazy or wonderful, or Commissioner Tobias, then Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought we were going in a different direction. I actually put down, I'm looking here, as it was, I thought 10 was far too kind. I put down 50 to 100, so I was good anywhere there. However, these are folks, certain folks have ignored and ignored and ignored. I don't know that we should treat anyone that's ignored it, whether their proximity to the lagoon. Obviously, there's a bigger impact, but they've still disregarded the letters that we've sent. So, I have no problem with 75, but I certainly would want everyone be subject to that $75 fine if we were to go that way.
And I agree with the first portion of what you were talking about in the sense that the money, I believe, has been available to those folks that would disproportionately, if not exclusively, fall in the $75 fine criteria that I set out, not the $10. Eddie, is that, does your understanding match that, or am I, I see Frank, Mr. Bate?
No, I want to make it clear because I don't want this to be handled inappropriately. They, you know, after the board had the discussion the last time, the department, Natural Resources has not tried to expend any of those monies. So, they did not go back because the board had discussion about whether or not how to do it, and they weren't very comfortable with what the board wanted. So, you know, we still have that 830,000 or 840,000. We have not gone out, the staff has not gone back out to those people and asked them. They got the initial letter and the follow-up contact that happened early on. Then the board had the discussion, but Natural Resources has not pursued it. So, all those funds are still available because we haven't done anything in that regard.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've given these folks ample time, sent them letter after letter. You know, when we're looking at less resources, obviously, in sorrel, I think at this point, what was it, 12% of people have taken it? I don't know that giving them extra time is going to be something that is, I think we've done the carrot and it's now time to bring in the stick. In fact, I would even go a step further, and there's option three, which is the injunction. I would say that after a certain period of time, you would know better than me, whether that be, you know, 60 days, if they had not paid the fine, that we go the injunction route. Obviously, that wouldn't be the first choice because, you know, there would be filing fees associated with that. Option two scared me a little bit, just jumping on people's property. I didn't want to put staff or anyone in that position. So, I mean, as an attorney, Commissioner or Chairman Loeb, what's your thought with that hybrid approach?
It's a way to go about it. You know, again, I think 75 a day, certainly at least at a minimum for the group I'm talking about, potentially for an expanded group if that's what the commission wants to do, you're talking about a four-digit sum over the span of a month. I think that is going to get almost anyone's attention. So, I agree with you. The folks that have had the money available, I have far less empathy for. I don't mind if it makes you more comfortable to have perfect overlap, presuming staff has some logistical ability to do it, to say, "Okay, well, for those folks that were offered money, sorrel funds to accomplish this, we'll fine you at a higher rate than we'll find other folks." I mean, we can do that. I don't think there's anything that prohibits it, Ms. Bentley?
You can do that.
Okay, sounds good. All right, that seemed like a seal of approval there. I'm fine doing that, too, but I just, I'm worried otherwise that we may end up penalizing folks that weren't given the opportunity and weren't told again and again that this is something they need to fix, the same way that we would with folks that have had the carrot offered to them.
So, sorry, real quickly. So, to be clear, the folks that had received the letter at this point, 100% of those would, should they not, the 88% of those that had not yet complied, I think there's still talk, we have to decide whether or not that money is still available to those folks. I would make an argument that we should use that money elsewhere if they haven't expended it at this point. But those folks would be at a $75 a day rate, and then as we expand this program, those folks that are further, your argument is they're further away from the lagoon, they did not have the ability to draw the 100% match, those folks would be $10 a day.
Or 25 if that turns to be the minimum, 10 or 25, correct?
Okay, I misunderstood. You're, that is, I would fully support that.
I appreciate it.
Commissioner, if I may, I just want to make sure we understand the dynamics. So, as part of the sorrel plan, there were, there's smoke testing program that we intend on advertising in December, January. And in this program, it'll encompass the Barefoot Bay Area, the beaches, of the remaining portion that we haven't done yet as part of the smoke testing, Melbourne Beach, Indian Atlantic, and the remainder of Satellite Beach. And I believe also we're doing large areas of Merritt Island.
Mr. Chair?
No. And under sorrel. So, the intent of this is that when we go and institute this program, that we are on a consensus of how the enforcement should be done. If it's $75 a day, obviously, we give them notice. They have a 30-day period in order, you know, they're notified at some point that they'll be made aware, and within an appropriate amount of time, we would institute that fine.
That makes sense. Commissioner Tobias, real quickly before I turn it over to Commissioner Isnardi, if that's all right? Just briefly. I don't have a problem thinking about it for a few seconds here with your suggestion that the folks that have been offered the money, taking it back, because obviously, if the carrot didn't work, we shouldn't keep the carrot when we're pummeling them with the stick. I think they've earned the stick, so let them live with it. I'm with you on that. We can do what I suggested and add that as well as another portion of it.
Give other people the opportunity as we move, yeah.
Someone that may be more appreciative of it.
I agree.
Commissioner Isnardi?
Well, I appreciate that you guys are kind of negotiating without any input from the three of us. I would just like to say, I mean, whether or not they should have taken the opportunity and taken those monies, obviously, everyone here would agree that they should have. However, were they under the threat, question for you, were they under the threat of fine of possibility?
No.
See, and that's my concern, because if the goal is to fix the laterals, the smoke testing is new and the goal is to fix the laterals, I don't want to give them six months to get it fixed, but I want them to understand, this is the money that's available. If you don't get it fixed, these are the potential consequences. And I think you just began to speak on that about the 30 days.
Correct.
Because then, again, if the goal is to fix the problem, and I always dealt with this, or I always feel this way with code enforcement, as much as, you know, those fines accumulate and it's an aggravation for staff and everything, the goal is to stop the leaking, and the goal is to stop the leaching. And so, if that's the intent, and we have $800,000 right there waiting to fix those laterals, I would much rather see them fixed than to find somebody who's probably, we're going to have to get an injunction, we're going to have to, I mean, and the laterals still aren't going to be fixed for another year, two years, whatever. And they'll just sit in their house and let us lean their property. And it's kind of pointless and silly if we do have an opportunity at least one more time to give them, you know, it's this or this is a consequence.
And it's not just the area, I know there's a lot of focus of the area of Satellite Beach that was smoke tested, but it's really talking about the areas we are going to be smoke testing and what's going to be the method with that.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I heard that people hadn't taken advantage of getting these laterals that leak and that pollute their nearby waterway, I was stunned. I really was stunned because these people live on that water, and it's not a free-flowing water, so if they're polluting it, it's staying in their little canal. So, I'm not as benevolent as you, although I understand and I fully appreciate what you're saying. It's better to get them fixed than to be spiteful. But, gosh, it's just, it's just beyond me that people have the attitude that as long as it flushes, I don't care if it's leaking.
It's sad.
It's not my problem.
I get it.
That's, so, I don't know, I'm just going to throw out an idea. Maybe the people that had the opportunity to get it done for free, maybe we slap them on the wrist a little bit and say, "Well, that time has passed, but now you only get half, we're only going to offer you a half."
I'm good with that.
And if you don't take advantage of the half, then we're going to institute fines of, and you're, and you're, Mr. Tobias, I never thought I'd say this, but you're nicer than I am.
I wasn't even mean.
I was going to, I was going to, I was going to suggest $125 fine. That really gets their attention.
Did you all get that in minutes? All right. Sorry.
So, anyway, those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Okay, just along this path, okay, we did this smoke test to like figure something out, and I don't think if they would have known we're going to come along and slap you down later, that they would have agreed to it. Right now, I'm just going to keep you out of certain areas here because I don't want my constituents mad at me right now if we haven't figured this out. But Commissioner Loeb, you made a good point. It's leaking into the lagoon. But here's the thing, and I mean, we have septic tanks that are leaking into the lagoon, and we aren't even checking them. So, I mean, this is an absolute mess, but we've got probably a lower water problem. But here's the thing, I think we've been kind of floppy on this. So, I would recommend, again, these are your constituents, they're going to be mad at you, but I would recommend that we send out a letter and say, "Hey, guys, want to remind you, we found this, and we are going to come on your property with your permission and fix it, use the sorrel funds to do it, or you can do it yourself and turn in reimbursements. If you don't let us on your property, you don't turn in reimbursement, 30 days, we're going to go ahead and have to assign some fines. We're here to fix this problem, and we need you on board." I think that way you give them a little bit of time to figure out what they're doing. They can turn in the receipts or let us do it. It can come out of the sorrel funds. And I have no problem with sorrel funds fixing this because we're spending all that money to convert, you know, the septic tanks over to the highest, and this is just fair for these people paying the taxes, too. So, that's what I would recommend for your area here. It gives them a little bit of time because we've been kind of flopping on it.
I understand where you're coming from. You know, first off, I do have concerns with us going onto the property and fixing it. I think the way that the sorrel program was structured was they would receive up to the cap with whatever expenses they submitted from their licensed plumber to handle it. I'm much more comfortable from a liability perspective letting them pick whoever it is they want. I can tell you that, you know, there certainly are some plumbers that are better than others, but for us to be in the business of saying, "Well, we should use this," that puts us in a spot where frankly, I don't think we need to go. Let them use whoever it is that they're comfortable using. I've got to say, I'm a little more on the side of Commissioner Smith and Tobias, actually, I'm a lot more on the side of Commissioner Smith and Tobias on this one. This isn't one where I think I should do what my constituents necessarily or a portion of them would be happiest with. I've got to do what's right on this one, and these are folks that have been told unambiguously that they are responsible for polluting the area that they live in. They have cared so little for their neighbors and so little for the environment that even with money made available to them, they could have accomplished a fix at no cost whatsoever. They didn't care enough to do that.
Reimbursements, sir.
We were offering to do reimbursements, as I understand it. Is that right, Eddie?
The logistics with sorrel, because now we're getting into how sorrel was funded it, they wanted to do an RFP with plumbers. And then we found out that there was a responsibility that we, that that dynamic wouldn't work, and I think we were leaning back toward reimbursement.
Some people want to be able to afford to get reimbursement, so, no.
I understand where you're coming from, but the fact is, they have a setup where, in my opinion, just like with the CARES Act, and I think Commissioner Tobias is a couple steps beyond me on that one, where I don't think there's any entitlement to CARES Act funding by individual businesses. I'll support them getting it under certain circumstances, but I don't think they're entitled to it. So, too, with the sorrel funds, I don't think they're entitled to be reimbursed for something that they don't have any legal right to. I think it's a good program to have to reimburse them, but, you know, I don't, I don't view their potential, let me, I guess the best way to phrase it, you know, the way that I look at it at this point, and this is one where I see both sides of it, the fact is, regardless of everything else, there's certain expenses that come along with owning a home. There are things that I've had to pay for that I've not liked to pay for. This is one that not just impacts them, but impacts everyone around them. It's part of the cost of homeownership. I hate to say that, but just as if your roof breaks, you've got to fix it. If your lateral is leaking, you've got to fix it. I don't know too many folks that would have a problem going to a bank and saying, "Look, here's a letter from the government," assuming their credit is an absolute trash, which most folks that own a home wouldn't have trash credit, saying, "Look, here's the, here's proof that I will be reimbursed almost instantaneously. Give me a loan at whatever interest rate you want, whatever the, you know, the usury limit is in the state," because they're going to pay it. I don't think there are any prepayment penalties in this state. Even if it's 20% interest or 25% interest, you're talking about such a short period of time for them to be able to get reimbursed and pay it back, it would be negligible. So, I don't know that I have too much empathy for someone saying, "Well, I couldn't pay it for one reason or another," knowing that we have a program in place that they can show a lender locally, where, you know, again, even if they get hit with a high interest rate, it's irrelevant because they're only going to be paying for it for such a short period of time. So, you know, I guess to kind of get back to it, and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Tobias and then Isnardi. You know, I would stick with the 75 a day if their property is connected to it, connected to a portion of the utility which could spill in. Eddie, I see you.
Yeah, I just, because I'm hearing this conversation, and we're linking this ordinance of 110-68, and we're, and I'm seeing a link with sorrel. And the one thing I just wanted to point out is, not all of Brevard County is in the Indian River Lagoon Basin. So, for example, amongst others, if you're in Port St. John, if you're on the west side of US-1, you're in the St. John's River Basin. If you're in Suntry or Vieira, you're in the St. John's Basin. So, and I only bring that up because as the sorrel plan was created, it was created for the Indian River Lagoon Basin. So, if there's money programmed under the Indian River Lagoon Basin, for example, I live in Vieira, and my lateral leaks, I'm not eligible for that money. So, I just want to make sure as we...
And let me ask you, because part, I mean, the part of the language that I used when I intro'd this, or at least jumped on in the beginning, was that would apply the higher fee if they were leaking into directly or indirectly the lagoon, or alternatively into any body of groundwater. I think that would cover us as far as enforcement on those particular instances, too.
It would cover everything.
Yeah. So, again, that's what I would fall back to. Commissioner Tobias, then Isnardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eddie, can you run us through the timeline of this? I do remember the city manager of Satellite Beach coming up here and talking about this program, the smoke program, and volunteering Satellite Beach for it. So, can you tell us what month the smoke testing was done?
The previous or the proposed?
The 88% of folks that have ignored...
It was, it was prior to me arriving here, and I, which one?
It was 2017.
It was 2017, but I'm not sure what time of year that occurred.
Okay, so, we identified a problem. When was the sorrel matched? Because Satellite Beach would be, would that be an area in which they were eligible for sorrel?
Yes, yeah. And the report, I'm vaguely remembering, it was 2018 when the final report came in, so the funding was available at that time.
Okay, so it's available, identified a problem in 2017, identified a funding source in 2018. I imagine, tell me at that point, a letter is then sent out to the homeowner saying...
Yeah, it was coordinated through the staff and financial resource, but a letter was sent out to notify them of their issue, the fact that there was, the fact that there was a, there was funding available up to X amount, please contact, you know, so-and-so. I believe there were two rounds of those letters, and that was the due diligence on that.
Okay, so, just to put this in perspective, an issue identified roughly three years ago, a funding source two years ago, two letters, and whatever that is, 88% of people have ignored that. I think at this point, expect giving them an extra 30 days is probably not going to mean a hill of beans. I like Commissioner Loeb's approach that if it is sorrel-related, these folks don't even need to go to a bank. They would have had the ability to draw down those funds, and thus should be subject to, I don't care whether it's 75 or $125, but either way, it certainly should be a lot more than 10. However, the folks that don't have access to that, and $2,000 or $3,000, maybe, I don't know, cost prohibitive, but certainly a lot more than free. I think Commissioner Loeb's approach of $10 a day is certainly extremely, extremely reasonable when it comes to that. In fact, I would even provide you the leeway for folks, once they had signed contracts. Obviously, there's time for permitting, and, you know, imagine if all these folks run out to get plumbers at one time, there's a limited amount of equipment. So, certainly, you know, I wouldn't want somebody to get penalized because their contractor couldn't show up for five or six days. So, if they had a sign...
And we can give waiver.
I think you would. I absolutely think you would. But I certainly would want to provide you with that discretion that people had seen the error of their ways and moved forward. But clearly, the folks, the 88% of folks who've known there's a problem and who've been given the tools of being fully reimbursed, I don't think they deserve day one. In fact, I'd start the fine today if I could.
Commissioner Isnardi?
I was going to say, I don't think we can start fining people without any sort of warning, correct? I mean, we'd have to give them some sort of legal warning before we just start...
To give them notice.
Right. And that's, I guess, what my next question's going to be, because it's obvious this is going to pass. And I'm not against it, believe me, again, but I think our focus is less on getting those laterals fixed and more on fining because we're angry because people didn't take advantage of the program. And it's okay to be angry with those people for not caring about the lagoon, or caring about their neighbors, or caring about tourism, or their future, or the waterways. But at the same time, if the goal is to fix the laterals, let's do everything we can to get them to fix the dang lateral that's leaking, and then at least give them 30 days' time, but we're going to have to anyway. And if you do get that signed contract, you know, that commitment, maybe some, maybe there's something that we can show for that person that can't afford the few thousand dollars, because not everybody has it in their bank account. Maybe they can work with the plumber, work with somewhere where the county guarantees the monies once it's paid, you know what I'm saying? Maybe they'll do the work, and maybe that's a solution. Or maybe we can help them to say, "Yes, we can confirm that those monies are available. We work out some kind of reimbursement or something with, dealing directly with the private plumber or..."
That makes sense, too.
Because that may be helpful to, you know, if the county says, "Yeah, these monies are available, this person qualifies, we will pay you when you're done." Because most people don't get paid until they finish the work, anyway.
Obviously, up to a cap, and whatever cap was specified.
So, I understand, we're looking at two criteria, a daily fine if you're in a sorrel-eligible area.
Let me make it a little easier for you, and then I'll probably ask Commissioner Smith, because I think his was the closest to this out of everyone to make the motion. So, there would be recommendations to the special magistrate with a $75 a day fine if the subject property is connected to any portion of the utility, which could spill directly or indirectly into either the lagoon or alternatively into any body of groundwater. Otherwise, a $10 a day fine. I did like what Commissioner Smith suggested about cutting the amount available 50%, kind of as a middle ground, to those folks that have already had it extended to them. Frankly, it's 50% more than they're entitled to, so we'll give them half of the carrot that we've had the other half of, or that we make the other half available to a larger pool. And also, I'd ask that we include in the motion an expansion of the pilot area without touching the 830,000 or 840,000 that's been allocated to accomplish the leaking lateral fixes to the entire county, any portion of the county that's on our utility here. As I said, I talked to Virginia about it. She didn't seem to have any opposition to it, and the funding itself would remain the same, so it wouldn't cost us any more. And the half that we're removing from the table from the folks that were previously advised that that was something available to them back in two years ago, whatever the timeframe was, that'll enable us to offer that to more residents as well. So, I see Mr. Bate kind of wiggling there.
The only thing I heard that you said was, "That funding would have to be only for properties that it's spilling into the Indian River Lagoon."
Yes, sir.
It couldn't just be the whole county.
Yes, sir, thank you.
That's what you meant, thank you.
So, that would be the requested motion, Commissioner Smith, if that works for you?
Works for me.
All right. I'm going to treat that as a motion.
My fellow commissioners agree.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
If we're, I think half is overly generous. Can we put a time cap on that? Give them a 30, I mean, they haven't...
Commissioner Smith, what do you think, sir?
I think it's a great idea.
You want to say 30 or 45?
I don't care. Just as long as there's a emphasis to...
I feel nice right now, let's give them 45. Please.
If we're just going to pay for half of the...
For those that were offered, the entire freight having been paid by us, for the other folks that would have new offers from the program, they would have the entire amount offered to them, up to whatever the predetermined cap is. I can't recall the amount offhand.
If you change that, go ahead and pick it up, because you haven't given notice you're going to do this, and since we're always giving notice before we start doing the fines, I would vote for it. So, that's the...
What was that? I can't hear you.
Well, my goodness, Kurt. If we went ahead and just went back, because we haven't done this yet, and say, "Look, we're giving you this amount of days, because you have to wait before you start fining them, and we're going to pull it out of the sorrel funds to do this," then you would have my vote on it right now, because they're going to have to get notice before we just start slapping a fine on them tomorrow. I think they've just, we've just, hasn't been aggressive, so they've got maybe lazy on it. I don't think anybody really wants stuff leaking into the lagoon, but I just have a feeling they just didn't, I know it's bad, but, you know, we just talked about how bad people are throwing the garbage out the window, too.
Same people.
I know. Probably same people, right. They probably have less than five years' legal experience.
Yeah.
So, if you would go ahead and move that up, so they'd have that opportunity first round out, you would have my vote on this.
Commissioner Isnardi?
I'm just saying, I think it's getting too muddy. I think we're trying to penalize, so we're going to take half your money if you don't, I mean, come on, again, we're trying to, we're trying to get them to fix the problem. And by saying we're taking half the money, if they already were leery about taking it to begin with, or they didn't have the funding to begin with, now we're going to punish them more by making them pay more? Is that going to get the lateral fixed, is the question? And I think that that decreases the chances it might get fixed, whether it be because of financial reasons, whether it be because of mistrust. I think it's silly. I think we're just, we're just mad because they didn't do it. I mean, come on. I mean, really?
Well, ultimately, we want them to do it.
And it's fine, and we can argue about it, and it's fine, and I'm glad you have your votes, but I'm not going to support it, because now we've added that, and now we have sweeping county-wide, you know, coverage, which sounds good, but I'm not comfortable, at least at this moment, looking at what that means.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
The people, we're going to expand this program now. Is that exactly correct?
Yeah, the objective, just to give you a little background, Commissioner, on, so in the last month or so, there have been a House bill and a Senate bill that have passed in Tallahassee, and Senate Bill 712 is talking, and again, both of these were endorsed, Senate Bill 12 was sponsored by Senator Mayfield, House Bill 1091 was representative fine. And 712, they're putting more of an emphasis on government and utilities to not only come 712, they're putting more of an emphasis on government and utilities to not only come up with programs, but also policy and whatnot, which, again, this discussion is a policy in how we're addressing, on how to minimize illicit discharge. And as you know, you know, the governor has been very strict about the environment, and this is some of his initiative. House Bill 1091, if you're not familiar with it, is the representative fine about the fifty percent surcharge and penalty. So whatever used to be allocated for fines has now gone up, and there's like some formula associated with it. So, part of the driver, it's a funny coincidence, because this has happened in between of me posting this on the agenda, but there is a, you know, there is some other drivers associated to, we're just trying to, you know, get solidified.
Okay, well, where I'm going with this is, if we're gonna make the free funds available to the rest of the county, I think we should tie a string to that as well, because we may find the rest of the county acts just like the people in your district and my district, that have just said, well, tomorrow's another day, and I'll get around to it.
Forty-five days?
If we notify the new people that funds are available, and you have forty-five days or ninety days to take advantage of it, I think that would make me feel better, because then we're giving them an incentive that if I don't go out and do this, you know, it's not gonna get thrown in a drawer and forgotten. That's my point. We want them to do it, we're gonna give them an incentive to do it, and they've got ninety days to do it.
Ms. Bentley, and then Commissioners Darty?
I wasn't done the first one, I was talking, and you asked a question, but that's fine. I'll wait again.
Commissioners Darty, and then Ms. Bentley.
And it's more to respond, 'cause I think initially you were talking to me, because I was talking about, you know, getting the lateral fixed and getting, and I think that's great. I think, but as far as countywide, it's just sorrel, sorrel-related. So, again, I think that the goal is to get the laterals fixed. I think everybody wants that. But punishing people who already were hesitant to take the money may not get us where we want to be, and that's a healthier lagoon. So, I'm all for it, I think it's wonderful. And luckily, we're still collecting enough money to do it. I mean, I was a champion of trying to get us to expand our sewer capacity, because I didn't want discharges in the lagoon. I just wanna make sure we're doing it right, and not disincentivizing people to do it. I want more people to get their laterals fixed, you know. So, anyway, okay, I'm done.
Ms. Bentley?
The way this is set up with code enforcement, it would be very simple to give them the notice of violation, and where appropriate, give them information about the sorrel program again. So it would be one, two. Here's the stick, and here's your carrot.
Okay, as far as your suggestion, Commissioner Smith, I guess the post-motion suggestion to potentially condition the extension of the offer to pay for new areas or for new homes that have not previously been offered, to tack a forty-five or a sixty-day time limit on it, I'm fine with that. You pick the number you want between those two. I just wouldn't want to do a month, I don't know that that's enough.
I would do ninety days.
That's fine.
Gives them plenty of time, and I think we're being reasonable. And it gives them time to secure their financing and get the work done.
Okay, and then as far as the portion that have already had the offer extended to them, where we're gonna make half available, I know Commissioner Tobias was talking about a forty-five-day tie to that, do you want to maintain that for the folks that have, the eighty-eight percent that have not done anything despite having had the opportunity?
I'm with Commissioners Darty here. I think that the purpose is to get it done. I would give them ninety days as well.
Okay, so ninety on that. So, all right, just to, I guess, just for clarity's sake, since we've kinda gone around a little bit on this. So, Commissioner Smith, your motion would then be to make recommendations to the special magistrate of a seventy-five-dollar-a-day fine if the subject property is connected to a portion of the utility, which could spill directly or indirectly into the lagoon, or alternatively into any body of groundwater, otherwise ten dollars a day. You also contemplate in your motion expanding the pilot area for the sorrel funds that have been made available to fix leaking laterals to the entire county, any portion where we have our utility, where they are entitled to apply based on it potentially going into the lagoon, as mentioned by Mr. Abate. The amount of funding for that program would remain unchanged at eight-hundred-and-thirty or eight-hundred-and-forty thousand. For the folks that have previously been extended the offer to have sorrel pick up the entirety of their cost for the fix of a leaking lateral, the eighty-eight percent that declined to do anything over multiple years, all right, let me leave that portion out. Let's not even get into the multiple years, we're gonna make the motion convoluted. For the folks that have previously been extended the opportunity to have sorrel pick up the cost of fixing their leaking lateral, we are effective immediately cutting the amount available in half. They will have ninety days to make use of that, at which point the half is then off the table. For any new areas that are offered the cost to fix the leaking laterals, they'll have ninety days from the date that they're offered that to make use of it. And should we say from date of mailing? Would that work for you, Commissioner Smith? When we're talking about three months, I think that's reasonable.
I don't know, what's the rest of the commission think?
Date of the letter?
Give who the full amount?
We've never done this before. I would send out the notices and say, everybody right now's got ninety days. Even if you've been the bad ones, you've got ninety days to get your favor back with the commission. And let them go ahead and consider part of the sorrel funds, too. If you do that and you don't cut it in half, you'll have my vote. If you're gonna do it the other way, I feel like we're being... Here's the thing, guys, I mean, we got this with the lateral lines, they volunteered for the smoke test. Nobody else is gonna volunteer for the smoke test now, 'cause we can't even get people to inspect their septic tanks. So I don't know how, you know, it's your district, but man, we're just, we're beating them up real bad. But we have septic tanks, and they don't get inspected, we can't make them get inspected, they're leaking. And we, you know, we've got this problem all through the county with everybody. So Commissioner Loeb, again, I agree with Commissioner Darty, the thing is to get them to do it. So let them know you need me business this time. You got ninety days, do it, guys, or we're gonna start doing something.
Commissioners Darty?
Yeah, that's what, exactly, you took the words out of my mouth. That's what I was gonna say. The goal is to get the laterals fixed, and I know I've said it twelve times, so I won't say it again. So I'll even consider voting for it, 'cause I like the ninety days, I think it's reasonable. And if people need to borrow the money from a bank, or from a family member, or work it out with the county to have some kind of direct payment to their plumber once the work is finished, and we've, you know, inspected it, whatever, I think that that's a safe number, and I want them to at least be eligible for the full amount.
And I'll just say, real briefly, on Commissioner Pritchett's comment, I've got a septic tank, I didn't have the option to connect the sewer, I would've loved to have connected the sewer, it wasn't made available to me. If someone wants, whether it's the city of Rockledge, wink, wink, you guys want to pay to have my septic tank inspected, I'll let you in anytime you want. You wanna come at three in the morning, Rockledge? Come on down.
I'm not allowed to, there's a safe thing, we're not allowed to make inspections.
No, but I'm saying, if they were to offer to do it at their cost, I'd let them inspect it, in a heartbeat. And if they offered to fix something, I can't imagine it'd be broken in just a few years.
This was a big problem we've been talking about for years, because the state of Florida blocked it, and so we aren't even able to go in and check which ones are leaking. And so, you know, we've done some things with the sorrel with this, but the areas, I'm still looking, the areas that have the heaviest amount of septic tanks along the lagoon have the biggest problems. So it's kind of a no-brainer to me. I mean, we're doing these things, too, but, again, Commissioner Loeb, this is your district, but, you know, if you all of a sudden do this without letting them know you're being serious, your phone's gonna ring off the hook, too. And I know it's serious, we do need to take it, but, you know, this is the reward thing now. We're gonna fix it, here's your carrot, quit doing it, fix it, 'cause we're about to get serious, so.
Well, I think getting serious is taking Commissioner Tobias' approach of saying, it's just gone, period. That, to me, is getting serious. And I don't think that's necessarily wrong, either, but being in a good mood, I think Commissioner Smith's approach is perhaps a little more appealing tonight.
Am I the meanest, then?
You're welcome to say that.
I don't want to give you that, you're gonna wear that as a crown.
No comment.
I know, and I'm not gonna give that to you. Not tonight, at least. But, yeah, you know, I respect where everyone is with it. I just happen to be in Commissioner Smith's boat with this particular issue. I think I've stated ad nauseam what the requested motion is from Commissioner Smith. If it makes Commissioner Darty a little happier, I understand it's not gonna get her vote on it, but I still think it's a good idea. We could even have included with that motion that staff will make reasonable efforts to guarantee payment up to specified limits with licensed plumbers, if that's necessary for certain individuals, so that we would directly pay their licensed plumber, as opposed to us reimbursing them, so that now they don't have to have any concern about where to borrow the money from, 'cause we're guaranteeing it at the end, up to that cap.
I don't know where y'all are on the line. Where I'm landing, I know where Commissioner Darty's landing, but I don't know where you guys are landed right now, I've kinda got lost a little.
Well, let's hear from Commissioners Darty, then we'll-
I just, you know, I think somebody should call the question here any second, because it's, we're going in circles.
Yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Smith, are you gonna budge on that issue, or no? On the half, I mean, are you set on it? I just, I wanna be clear before we call the question and make them-
Yes, I think so. If I'm trying to put myself in their shoes-
You don't have to justify it, I got your position.
No, I just wanna explain where I'm coming from. If I were in their shoes, and I got a notice like that, I'd kick myself in the butt.
Right.
But I'd say, it's my fault. And half is better than nothing. They're willing to come up with half, so let's get it done, we need it done, we'll pay the half.
All right, well, I think you have your three votes, but I don't know if you'll have more than that.
So I would just say, Commissioner Smith, if you're all right with that, I do think it was a good idea, even if it's not gonna bring her on board, which it doesn't sound like it will, to ask staff as well, to the extent that they reasonably can, to look at guaranteeing, or make attempts to guarantee payment up to the specified limits for licensed, I guess it's plumbers, would those be the only individuals?
Yes.
Licensed plumbers? And then everything that I previously stated? Okay, all right, I'm seeing some nodding.
As long as staff doesn't think that's gonna be a nightmare.
What do you think, Eddie?
No, I mean, when this program got started, it was gonna be, you know, it was already taken into account of basically tracking, and hopefully, if we do this, and as we expand this program, we're gonna be using Exella to, as a module, to actually help streamline a lot of that. So we're comfortable with it.
Okay. All right, so that's your motion?
That's it.
Perfect. I'll go ahead and second it. I think we've discussed the living heck out of it. So I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right, passes. Three-two with Commissioners Darty and Pritchett in the negative. Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you.
And thanks for your patience. You wanna discuss a little more? All right, let's see here. That was J1. J2, may I have a motion to approve J2? I think that one's pretty-
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioners Darty. I'll go ahead and second her motion to approve Jays and Juliet II. All in favor of approving Jays and Juliet II, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, J3. Welcome.
J3 is opportunity of twenty-five million in grant revenue, with a short deadline. We're asking for signing authority to the county manager, and just need your approval.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett, I'll second it. Any discussion? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Okay, so J4, I do have one public comment card. Before we have them come up, I did want to distribute both the, all positive and all negative emails that I saw with respect to this item. If you'd be kind of, hand this down for me. Thank you.
I'll be for the perfect while.
Thank you. These are all the positive and negative emails I received prior to leaving to come here this evening on this particular item. So, the good and the bad are there. That said, I did kinda notice some themes in terms of some of the negatives. I did want to address some of the apparent misperceptions or misconceptions, some of the claims. It looked like one of the claims that appeared to repeat perhaps a little bit was that civilians aren't as good shot as police. Even if that were true, I don't know that that's necessarily relevant, but I haven't seen any evidence from anyone that's argued that to suggest that it is, or to document that it is. We've got a couple deputies here who certainly can correct me, but when I looked on FDLE's site earlier today, and I'll just quote verbatim what they had, it's two sentences, or three sentences, "All certified law enforcement officers are required to qualify once every two years with their firearm. This forty-round qualification course must be conducted by a commission-certified firearms instructor." This qualification course, and it talks about the time of the year when they actually have to complete it. But my understanding is this every other year forty-round qualification course, the bulk of the shooting is within seven yards of a stationary paper target. And I'm not saying that the average law enforcement officer doesn't go out more often, but by that same logic, I don't think the average concealed carry permit holder necessarily sits at home and doesn't go to the range as, to the same extent that any other individual might. I can tell you, I've shot some four-digit number of handgun rounds downrange just in this year, and I've got a concealed carry permit. I can tell you, I don't know that I'm not a better shot than a lot of law enforcement officers. In fact, the last time I shot in a competition that had law enforcement officers, I shot better than they did. Not to say that they're bad shots, not to say that I'm, you know, that I'm not in some way atypical, because I tend to shoot more than most, but I don't know that that's really a good distinction. So, as I've said, I've not seen any evidence to suggest that concealed carry permit holders are either better or worse in terms of their accuracy than law enforcement officers. And again, I would suggest that a great many concealed carry permit holders shoot a lot more than forty rounds every couple years. One of the claims that was kind of almost comical, and that it's just seemingly unrealistic, is that civilians will spray bullets all over the place, and I'm just using the language that was used in the email, spray. As I understand it, all civilian-owned automatic weapons, at this point, have to have been constructed and registered with ATF prior to their cutoff date, which passed back in the eighties. So we're talking decades ago. So as a consequence of that, it's at this point prohibitively expensive, generally on the order of at least twenty grand, for a civilian to buy an automatic weapon, 'cause they have to have been made and registered prior to that cutoff date back in the eighties. They also already require regulation with the ATF. Another claim, and I'm using their language, nut jobs. More nut jobs will acquire firearms. The fact is, this resolution doesn't seek in any way to expand the pool of potential firearm owners. It doesn't seek to expand the locations in which firearms can be lawfully carried. The proposal only seeks an expansion in the manner in which law-abiding citizens may legally carry firearms. These are firearms that they're already lawfully entitled to carry, in the places where they're already lawfully entitled to carry them at. So really, it doesn't change who's eligible to buy a firearm in any way, shape, or form. Another claim I saw here with one or two of the emails was that tourism would be hurt by open carry. And this is another one of these claims, it's not even based on anecdotal evidence, which, you know, itself may be problematic. It's based on no evidence that I've seen. I've not seen anyone even attempt to offer something to support the arguments that tourism would decline following a statewide adoption of open carry. The vast majority of all states support some form of open carry, and I've seen nothing to suggest that their tourism industry's declined as a result of supporting it. I think New York has at least some forms of open carry authorized, and I don't think that anyone would say that's not a major tourism destination. So, with that, I did mention we have one card. So let's go ahead, we'll address the card, and then we'll see where it goes. We have Fred Rotz, Roats, from Indy Atlantic?
Yep.
Welcome, sir.
I'll shed the mask, so I can-
Appreciate your patience.
Well, I've been a resident of Indy Atlantic for over forty years. I own firearms, I have a concealed weapon permit, and I wish to comment on your proposed resolution. Frankly, I strongly object to enabling open carry. Let me make it clear, I don't object to a properly-vetted citizen carrying a concealed weapon, but there's a big practical difference between open carry and concealed carry. Open carry is often a means of intimidation. You see someone carrying a weapon on their hip, their first reaction is, they may use that. This tends to escalate any confrontation from maybe a verbal exchange to a potentially deadly one. There's an argument that, well, if I have open carry, I can get to my gun quicker if I have to. I kinda wonder how many instances there are where that one second or two seconds required to access a properly concealed weapon would make a difference. The biggest difference it'll make is that someone sees a gun, they're gonna react. And you talked about, what was it, seven yards away, they're shooting, and that's, I believe, the police criteria for when you have to react, the guy can get to you too quickly. And most confrontations between people are not seven yards, it might be seven feet. So you've got a gun on your hip, and you've got somebody pissed off for some reason, they can probably get to you before you can get to the gun. And if they're bigger and stronger, like most people are than I, they'll get the gun, too. There's an argument made, and I'm basing this on reading Florida Today's summary of your comments, that best remedy for a bad guy with a gun is to have a good guy with a gun. Well, this resolution does nothing to enhance that, because you're already talking about people who have to have a concealed weapon permit. You're not getting any more good guys, you're just saying, these good people can carry them open. You know, I, for one, don't care to walk down the street, come up to someone and find they've got a gun on their hip. I don't know why they've got a gun on their hip. You talk about tourists, well, I think a lot of tourists would say, holy cow, am I in the Wild West, and who's gonna start shooting first? Let me emphasize again, I'm not against guns. I'm against, however, open carry. I think it's provocative, and unnecessary, and unproductive.
Thank you, sir. And let me ask you, 'cause you mentioned potential for escalation. Given that the vast majority of states allow at least some form of open carry with or without a permit or a license, do you have any data to support that there's a greater level of escalation in those states than in states that don't allow open carry?
I don't. Might be able to get some, but let me tell you of an incident myself. I go hiking in the West every year. I go hiking in the West every year, and I go alone typically. And the last time I was out in Glacier National Park, I ran into two couples, very nice people. All four of them were packing guns, and I said, what the heck's going on? Well, Congress, in its infinite wisdom, had decided that the national parks now had to allow people to carry guns if that was the state law. Prior to that, you could transport a gun through a national park, but you couldn't carry it open. Well, as a hiker out in the back country, I thought, first of all, this is ridiculous. This gun is not going to save anybody from a bear, it's just going to piss the bear off a lot more. And secondly, I don't really care to see a gun tottered by someone I don't know out there. If you live in Wyoming and you're on a ranch and that's where you live, and yeah, you may have a gun for a good reason, but I don't see any great reason for shooting deadly snakes or...
I appreciate it, sir.
Bears. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I'll just tell you all in terms of, you know, one of the arguments that's come up a couple times as well. Yes, it's true that you're not enabling anyone to carry a gun in any place that they otherwise wouldn't be able to carry it, but the fact is, I can tell you the type of gun that you carry, and frankly, for a lot of folks, especially the more fashion-conscious folks, what you're wearing determines in large part the gun you're likely to carry. Yes, printing where you're showing the outline of the gun is not illegal in this state. It's wonderful that it's not illegal, but the fact is, I still don't want to print. If I'm carrying concealed, I don't want everyone under the sun to see the outline of a gun because they may figure, well, the guy's hiding a gun, so therefore, you know, there must be a reason that he's hiding it. You could say that that's even, you know, as provocative or perhaps more provocative than carrying it out in the open where you have nothing to hide. I'll tell you, I spent some time in Virginia over vacation, and Virginia, at least at the time, had legal open carry. Wasn't an issue. I went to, you know, salad bars, I went to stores, I was walking out and about, and no one had an issue with a firearm on my side. It was not made into an issue. No one ran off screaming in terror or even quietly in terror. Families had their kids within... certainly closer than social distancing would now allow, and there was simply no issue. You know, this is something that frankly gives us more options. If someone is upset by firearms, there's nothing that we're going to be able to do to change their perception, perhaps irrational perception oftentimes, that firearms are these evil tools that are inevitably going to lead to death. You know, I know that our sheriff has said a good guy with a gun is a great, you know, a great way of combating a bad guy with a gun. Now, I don't know in terms of whether that was the verbatim wording, but I certainly have heard him say that or something substantially similar to that a number of times. So, you know, I think we've addressed the fact that the arguments against this are largely anecdotal, and if they're, you know, if they're not even anecdotal, and a lot of the stuff that we've seen in the emails have not even risen to the level of anecdotal evidence, they're just pure speculation and pure supposition. So I would say that it's time for us to join the vast majority of states, over 90% of the states in this country that allow open carry. There's, you know, in the states where people have open carried, where I've open carried, there's just not been an issue. So I'll open it up to Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Smith.
I missed the social issues. So you're contemplating that this resolution, will you send it to the Brevard delegation? Is that the...
Yes, sir.
Yes. Out of curiosity, did you look at the bill that was filed this year in the legislature?
Which one?
The open carry bill, I apologize.
I know that I have seen...
The only reason I'm going there, did you see who the sponsor of the bill was?
Tell me.
That would be Anthony Sabatini.
Yes.
That would be the... it's ironic, he is the individual that, of course, is suing the municipalities and counties for mass mandates. So, politics makes for interesting bedfellows.
Prove it twice right twice a day.
Yes, I voted for this when I was in the legislature. This is something that comes up and up again. I will, you know, I will support this. Let me take this, because there's always a companion bill to this, and I want to see how far you're willing to go on this one. But there's carry on campus. So usually, we hear these in conjunction with each other. Are you willing to add carry on campus onto this, or are you...
Here's what I'll tell you. If you want to introduce a separate resolution on that...
I don't want to, I'm just curious.
Okay, I was going to say, I certainly would look at it. It would just depend on the particulars that you include. I'm not opposed to it necessarily, though.
Okay. On a more serious note, while open carry, I understand, is an issue, people have rights to carry in the state of Florida, concealed or open carry. I think it's kind of ironic, there's a few states that are open carry, that there's pending legislation to make it concealed carry. So it's kind of interesting the way it goes. Let me ask you, would you add in your resolution, there is a group of people somewhere in the neighborhood of 700,000 that are ages 18, 19, and 20, that no longer have the rights to have concealed weapons. Are you willing to add that into your resolution that would give those law-abiding citizens, those individuals who are eligible to serve in the military? I think that's a larger issue. I don't have any problem with open carry, but I think if we're going to send letters to our delegation, I... Do you think open carry is a larger one than taking the rights away from those 18, 19, and 20-year-old, law-abiding 18, 19, and 20-year-olds to purchase certain types of firearms?
Well, when you say certain types of firearms, give me a little more background because I, you know, I have some vague familiarity with what you're talking about, but I don't know that I'm at the level of being as versed as you are in that particular issue.
There was a bill, Marjory Stoneman Douglas Bill.
I'm not in favor of that at all.
Okay. That took rights away from 18, 19-year-olds, 20-year-olds, many of the students that I teach.
And it took bump stocks for me.
Pardon?
It took my bump stock.
Okay.
It would have made me...
Yeah, I... yeah, so I would suggest that we add a clause requesting the Brevard delegation institute legislation that would allow citizens that are age of majority who, with clean records, to lawfully purchase certain firearms, the ones that they had the rights to purchase before the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Bill.
Presuming it doesn't negate this resolution otherwise passing by costing an ample number of votes, I'm fine with it.
I didn't want to have to do another gun resolution, in all honesty, so I thought if we were going to do one, you know...
As long as we've got at least three, I'm happy with that.
Yeah, I'll, to be clear, I'll support it either way. I just didn't want to...
Same here.
Diminish, you know, the 18, 19, and 20-year-olds.
Sir, I'm sorry, I really, you know, I let you go over the three, let you... Sir, I'm sorry. I'm really sorry, sir, but I can't, I can't have it. I apologize. I really tried to give you every opportunity. I'm sorry, sir. Sir? We really, we can't have the conversation back and forth like this. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir, I really, we can't have it. I apologize, we just can't. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, sir. I guess this is probably going to be one of those emotional issues that people are going to be on one side or the other. I've had this conversation with an awful lot of... so I just use the phrase liberals. And most liberals have the idea that a gun, if a gun appears on a table, just lying there, it's going to kill everybody at the table. That's their fear. You and I know better. I think, I just saw recently something that I guess if guns kill people, cars drive drunk, and I don't remember what the rest of it was, but anyway. One thing I want to clarify, though, you were talking about states that have open carry. States like New Jersey and New York, they have open carry, but nobody has a permit because they make it so onerous to get a gun permit. New Jersey example, I think they charge 800 bucks, and they do a background check, and if you don't pass the background check, you don't get your 800 bucks back. And so they really go out of their way to discourage people from having a permit, and they're... I used to live there, and I still have relatives and a lot of friends there. And I can tell you that they get pretty crazy there. Just one story, I'll give you a quick two stories. One guy had a, his dad died, and he had a collection of antique firearms, and one of the firearms was a flintlock pistol. I don't know how old it is, but I can gather it was very, very couple hundred years old. And the firing pin was broken, and so he put it in glove box, and he was taking it to a gunsmith to get a price on making it work. He was pulled over, for I don't remember what reason, by the police, and the cop asked him in passing, "Do you have any weapons on board?" And he said, "Well, I have an old flintlock in the glove box." So he told the man to go to the back of the car and put his hands on the trunk. The cop, state trooper, pulled the gun out, handcuffed the guy, arrested him for illegally having in his possession a firearm. It was a 200-year-old gun that wouldn't even fire, and he was sentenced to, I don't remember how much time, in jail. The other case was a prison guard from Pennsylvania drove across the bridge, he lives in New Jersey. He went through a stop sign, he still had his gun on him. The officer saw that, arrested him on the spot. Governor Christie commuted both those sentences. But, the point is, that they're open carry, but they're not lenient. So, it's a whole different story. I don't know about the other states. I know there are a lot that have open carry, but I know New Jersey and New York don't, they don't encourage it.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I want to start with what Commissioner Tobias brought up, and sir, I agree. I think every 19, 20-year-old should have complete adult rights. If we're sending them to war, they should be treated like every other adult with all of the rights. I do. I do. I just, I just think it's fair. If you're going to send them over to risk their life for the nation, and you're going to treat them like adults doing that, we should let them be adults and make adult decisions and make mistakes. So I'm with you on that with whatever you do, sir. I believe that every person's able to carry a gun should go get a concealed weapon permit and carry them. I just, I just think it's a wise thing to protect yourself. I struggle a little bit with open carry. I don't know if it's because I'm a female or what, or maybe I'm just not used to seeing it, but I know up in where we are, we had a couple instances lately where someone was out there, and it was an assault rifle, you know, but, and you couldn't do anything about it, and they were there trying to provoke emotional responses. Someone walked up, they did the fishing thing like you have in your thing, and they really couldn't do anything about it, but he was definitely trying to provoke something by flashing his weapon. And so, I don't, I don't know. Commissioner Loeb, I do believe in guns, people should carry them. I just, I'm struggling with how comfortable I'm going to be as a mom and grandmom with open carry. So I'm just being honest with you on where I'm at, so.
I appreciate it. You know, and I'll just tell you, as far as, and again, this is my limited anecdotal one story from having been in Virginia for a little while on vacay. No one looked cross, no one... and granted, I wasn't, you know, toting around a rocket launcher, I just had a, you know, a 9-millimeter on my side. But, you know, when you have that as the law of the land, it's nothing for people to see it. I mean, if someone were frightened, they would be in the extreme minority. I mean, people are simply used to it.
Definitely agree with your last part, that they should be permitted to do that part, too.
Yeah, that's, my thought is, you know, realistically, without tying it to some permit or license, I just don't think the legislature's going to go for it.
I think if we permitted all guns like that, that you're going to show would be smart, too, but I'm just telling you my struggle with it, so.
I understand where you're coming from. I don't see any further lights. So if someone wants to jump in, Commissioners Nardi?
I just want to say I support it, and I'm really glad that you thought of adding the Stoneman Douglas thing because that thing should have been reversed a long time ago, and our legislature promised to fix it, and they never did, so.
And I'll...
I'm just a little... Is this a resolution? And no, I did one for the Constitution. I know it's important, I just want to hand-deliver it to them if you have to. Maybe they'll listen, but it's easy, this is an easy one for me.
You know, you know, I'll tell you, as far as the Stoneman Douglas Act, that I disliked certain portions of it, I liked portions of it. You know, the fact is, I viewed it like a lot of the proposed constitutional revisions, where if they bundled it, and I didn't like anything that was included in the bundle, I, you know, I would have been against the whole thing. So for the same reason, you know, there were portions of it that, quite frankly, I don't think were tolerable. To me, you know, frankly, did I need a bump stock? No. Was I entitled to own one? Yes. Did I own one? Yes. Did I buy it legally? Yes. Did I have anything that prohibited me from owning it? No. But to pass legislation that says, if you merely keep in your possession something that you legally purchased, whether you should have, you know, whether you should have bought it subjectively in someone's subjective moral view or not, to tell me something that I legally bought, if I don't get rid of it, sell it to someone, you know, presumably who's entitled to own it or dispose of it, that now you're going to make me into a criminal? Now that's going to be a criminal act? I think it was a felony, too. It's just insane to me. You know, and they had no mechanism even to grandfather in people that had them, and I would have had an issue with that because to take away something that's a right simply because people don't think that you need it, that, to me, is problematic. So I, you know, I have huge issues with what was done. I think there was perhaps a good intent by many of the folks that supported it, but to me, you know, it's like bundling anything. You really, if you oppose a certain portion of it fundamentally, you just can't support the whole thing. So, I don't know, if someone wants to make a motion to approve it with the change that Commissioner Tobias had suggested, which I'm happy to incorporate?
I'll make the motion, but to be clear, the only reason I threw that in was I thought that that would sink the resolution because I didn't want to be the only person that sponsored more than one resolutions that had gone down, so...
Oh, thanks.
With that being said, I will make the motion to support your resolution.
With your proposed change?
Sure.
Okay, all right. And will you all, in that motion, will you give me a little flexibility to make sure that I can wordsmith it in there without having to have it come before the commission again?
As long as you send a copy to Representative Anthony Sabatini, please.
That's fine, he's a LinkedIn connection, so it should be easy.
Perfect, thank you.
Right. All right, I'll go ahead and second it, and we'll, unless there's further discussion, I'll go ahead and call the question. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah. Can I preface it, though, because it's going to hit the newspaper?
Okay, yeah.
I do believe that people should carry guns. I think that people should get their permits to carry them. I'm just struggling right now with where I'm landing on open carry, so.
I hear you. We'll agree on 80% of it, disagree on 20, and so be it. All right, so passes 4-1 with Commissioner Pritchett in the negative for her reasons as stated. All right, let's take a look here. I think we're through the add-ons, public comment. We don't have anything under K is in kilo for the second public comment period, board reports. Mr. Batte, I know Fritz gave you something as well, if I understand, did he? Perfect. Thank you.
Can't hear you.
Frank, I don't know if your mic's working, sir?
Clerk can't hear him.
No, no, no. Thanks, Eden. No? Is it not going? I'm sorry to make you do it, would you mind coming up to the lectern? I just don't want the clerk to have problems with the minutes. I know that we're running a tight ship. I don't mind ponying up for some new batteries for you guys.
We should have a sergeant of the arms that has a time limit.
The first item, Commissioner, is requesting to cancel the board workshop for August 20th. We'd need a motion to do that. There is no item scheduled for that.
All right, a motion from Commissioners Nardi, I'll second it. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimously canceled. You got it.
The second item is from a tourism office. They need a modification with the Junior Olympics and what happened. They, obviously, they changed the venue, they did not use the Vieira High School, so things changed in terms of what the board had previously approved, and the contract is coming to the chair for signature, and that we're asking for the board to approve the Tourism Development Office to enter into a contract with AAU to fund expenses and fees for the Junior Olympics to be held in Brevard County in the amount of $50,000. Previously, it was a higher amount. That's been reduced.
So moved.
All right, I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Nardi's motion. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobias in the negative.
And I'll be bringing additional items to the board, but in light of how long this And I'll be bringing additional items to the board, but in light of how long this meeting's gone, I'll hold that off until Thursday night. I'm going to update you on things that are happening relative to the CARES programs.
You're going to jinx us. Thursday may run long now. I hope not.
Yeah, let me try to do Thursday. Thank you.
All right, fair enough. Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Bentley, what you got?
No report.
All right. Commissioner Pritchett? All right, Commissioner Tobias?
No report.
Commissioner Smith?
No report.
Commissioners Nardi?
No report.
And I'm going to go ahead and say no report as well. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn at 8:42. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and for dealing with us here.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.